Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Back. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, September 3, 2025, our regularly scheduled board meeting. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, I come thanking you for another day. Thank you for our first responders and all of our employees who do your will, your way. I ask a special blessing for our board meeting, the leadership of this board, the leadership of our county. In your holy name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. This is a rare meeting and we do not have any proclamations or commendations. So Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have three items that have been deferred to a date to be determined. The first one is Item A15, which is to approve and execute a grant of a sidewalk easement with the city of Tampa. Item B2 was a 9:45 time certain to approve submission of the annual report required by the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office for the school speed zone camera program. And Item B3, also at 9:45, was to approve the submission of the annual report required for the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office for the red light camera program. We have only one item for time certain, although I think we're going to end before that, is 11:45 recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes?
Second.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote and change the agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We're going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinion is valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members, however, as requested. At the same time, you address the board. Comments are not directed personally against board members or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. Each person will be given three minutes. Please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. First three speakers are Denise Herndon, followed by Tamara Randall, and then David Coleman. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I had mentioned about the Town Center Boulevard and Gorton Lake Road, the northwest corner. We had some rains before the 27th of last month, and I went out on the 28th. And it was quite a few days after the rains, and there's been quite a bit of rain on that complex. And it's not got asphalt or anything. So I wonder, have we had anything near 100-year flood codes concerning that project? The other one is me standing here and saying this is just letting this commission know what has happened to me. These aren't theories, these aren't conspiracies on my part or conspiracy theories. These are what's been happening to me. And I have no faith and trust in our sheriff's department because of deputies falsifying records to Baker Act me. And I know this isn't the whole sheriff's department, but something has to be done. And I know that there are a lot of mentally ill people out there, but for somebody like Sherlene Hammond to use this to not make people believe because she's drugged me with caffeine, when she drugged me, whatever it was with when I was Baker Acted, it had to have been an antibiotic or steroid. Because I had gotten moderate-sized cataracts within two months. And how I know? Because the day that I was Baker Acted, I was supposed to go to the eye specialist to check the pressures in my eyes. A month before that, I didn't have cataracts. And I said, what would do this? And he said steroids or antibiotics. My tongue was real white, and both of those drugs would do that to you. And I was not on anything like that. Sherlene Hammond is doing something to her husband. In 2014, when he asked me, will his prescription drug make him forget he had sex? That's when I knew he was being drugged also, when I realized it was caffeine, because none of those drugs that I've mentioned will show up in a drug screen. There are a lot of drugs out there that will cause a lot of illnesses. Sherlene Hammond has taken her husband out of the state, and I know she's doing something to him because she's not going to get rid of anything that he has accumulated, all because she allowed me to be Baker Acted. And something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Tamara Randall, virtual, are you on the line?
Tamara, are you on?
Hi, this is Tamara Randall. I am a parent and volunteer with Bacchus Horses for Handicapped, and we are on the agenda for B1 about a transition over, a possible transition over to Northwest Equestrian Trails. My role with Bacchus is I am their equestrian charity event chair. I also handle many other relations that have to do with the actual horses at Bacchus Horses for Handicap. I've worked with Forrest on numerous occasions and some of the upper management. Our relationship with the county is imperative in order to make sure that together we have transparency, effectiveness, efficiency, and safety are met. And we are asking that it be noted, Bacchus Horses for Handicap should be considered a stakeholder as far as the RFP and planning that is going on. We would like to make sure that we have a set schedule of meetings with the updates and planning to be part of the planning so that we also can know what's going on with the touchpoints and updates as well. Their RFP does look really good in general. We were looking at over last night and this morning. It looks like it would be a wonderful facility. It's going to be, the plan looks like it's going to be equivalent or better. And so as far as that part, we are pleased with that. Some items I would like to see added that I didn't see in it was the security of the property, the new property and barn. I don't know what the plans are for that. I didn't see anything on that as far, because it's going to be exposed compared to where we're at. It's off of a main road. And we want to make sure that the animals, because they're there 24 hours, the horses are there 24 hours in the equipment, that it's secure. And I didn't know what type of alarms, gates, or if they would allow a Hillsborough County employee to live on premises. I know that many of the parks have that. And I would think that this would be something that would deem necessary, as sometimes they need monitored if something's going on. The other things, two things are storm drainage. I know they have that in the RFP. I just want to make sure that there is something noted to make sure that some sort of drainage is put in to keep water off the paddocks. This is just having to do with medical issues with horses and their hooves, which can be quite costly if there's in-standing waters. So that is something. And the third thing I want to check and make sure is that the barn build and the facility, I know it's going to be built according to normal code, but I believe our current facility is to withstand a cat three.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you, ma'am. David Coleman, followed by Amy Torinos. Mr. Coleman here. Amy Torinos. And then Kim, I don't want to mispronounce her name, for B1. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Amy Torinos. I'm actually president of the Bacchus nonprofit. We really appreciate us being informed as far as what's going on and everything. And we are in support as far as this transition. We just want to make sure that everything is transparent and that we're going to be working as far as the goals that needs to get done, and we really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming down. Kim, and then Joanne O'Brien. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Kim Highstrong, and I'm here again to discuss Bacchus Equestrian Center, Item B1 on the agenda. I'm a proud mom, a special Olympian who rides at Bacchus Equestrian Center. My son has ridden at Bacchus for 28 years. Bacchus is an amazing riding facility, and we service over 180 special needs children and adults. We run in conjunction with the county. We hold half-hour lessons for 100 riders each week, so we are using the facility to its fullest. I'm also a 15-year board member of the Bacchus Horses for Handicap nonprofit Parents Group. We have a large and dedicated volunteer pool, great community relationships with organizations like the Crew of Ann Jeffries, individual donors, and corporate sponsors like TECO. So the nonprofit is out there in the community getting funds to support the children and the riders and the horses. We own the, the nonprofit owns the horses, and we put on a lot of special events for our riders. Because special needs people, as they get older and out of school, their world gets a lot smaller. So we try to have them interact and be out there with their peers, having a great time. For some background, about eight years ago, Tom Peppin sent an unsolicited proposal to the B O C C to move Bacchus to Sefner and build a facility in an area filled with child predators in exchange for the Bacchus Equestrian Center. His proposal was woefully short in value by over $1 million. After much negative press from the newspaper and local TV news and seeing the true cost, he withdrew his proposal, and we thought he had moved on. Now, as we understand the situation, an RFP has been drafted to do this exchange again, this time to move Bacchus to the Northwest Equestrian Park and build a new facility. We're sure that Mr. Peppin won't be the only one to submit a proposal, since no one else has ever expressed interest in our facility. It is clear that Mr. Peppin covets our facility as it lies adjacent to his vast personal compound. And we suspect he will not rest until he has wrestled away our cherished facility that supports the growth and progress of Hillsborough County's special needs community. But since it seems Mr. Peppin's desires are going to be fulfilled by this RFP process, we're here and asking that the Bacchus Horses for Handicap Board is able to prescribe the new facility design and specifications.
Thank you, Ms. Highstrong.
Okay. And thank you guys for all you do. You're wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am.
We appreciate your hard work and dedication.
Joanne O'Brien, followed by Todd Randolph, and then Thomas Cobert.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joanne O'Brien, here to speak about the culverts and Eastlake Park and where I live. As I believe some of the Commissioners know, we got flooded there, which has never flooded in all the years that I lived there, and some of the old timers that are still there. And I was wondering what they are going to do. Knock wood, so far we haven't had any hurricanes. Where these culverts are going to back up? And I was wondering if there was a way that possibly maybe lowering the lake? We do have a weir that drains out and goes under Orient Road down into Three Mile Creek. So that was my question as to what the problem is. And some people have just gotten out of their trailers that were on their houses down on Vincent and I think Spencer Circle was the other one that flooded. So that is a problem there, which we would like to see rectified. And I thank you for your time. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Hagan and Meyer, for all you do, and Ken for his kindness over the years that he has shown us with other issues that we did have in Eastlake Park many years ago with the tent city and everything else. Thank you all, and I appreciate you all. You have a wonderful, safe day.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Appreciate your kind words. Todd Randolph, followed by Thomas Cobert.
Hello, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph, and you have seen me here before, but not like this. I got you for three minutes. I'll make sure it's always interesting. Todd's show is always never boring. But of course, I'm here to talk about TECO's report last week, last couple of weeks ago on August 20th to the B O C C. Now, since TECO's owner, Amera, is headquartered in Nova Scotia, which translates to New Scotland, and since Scotland is part of the United Kingdom, I shall find it fitting, in typical American fashion, to best this the following complaints of TECO in a list of grievances. List of grievances against King George was 27. This is not, but it still addresses tyranny. TECO is not building a more resilient energy production enterprise when they are only investing in natural gas infrastructure and usage, which is subjected to volatile limits of fuel costs. TECO unequally campaigns for such large-costed infrastructure and building plans because that is a way to get a larger rate hike from the PSC, which we pay for. TECO is not justified in relocating their headquarters to Midtown at a staggering cost of half a billion dollars, which we pay for. They did not renew their lease in downtown Tampa, partly because of the risk of flooding in the uncommon years, which is stated on their website. They know what's going on, and they're moving inland. TECO is not justified in their recent set of rate hikes. Most are yet to be implemented in the coming months. Yet, at present moment, Amera's stock is up 29% year-to-date and pays out a whopping 4.4% dividend. TECO is disingenuous to their Floridian bill payers when Amera openly recognizes the great revenue generation that TECO provides. In their 2024 shareholder meeting, which is available to the public, TECO is not justified in the amount of advertising that it has. Something smells awfully fishy when a legal monopoly has to run commercials. It is lipstick on a pig. If a monopoly is operating in a fair and transparent manner within the community, then it has good PR. There's no need to get the Ministry of Information involved. And the most egregious grievance of all, missed opportunity, TECO could have had the naming rights to Tampa Bay Lightning. They're literally electricity. The home of the Tampa Bay Lightning could have been TECO Arena instead of Benchmark Whatever. And that's something that I think we all would be happily paying for. Yes, it was impressive to listen to TECO's VP's list of accolades and recognition that TECO has won and earned, but at what cost? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Last speaker, Thomas Cobert. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Tom Cobert. In the late 1960s, my parents moved from New Jersey to a Hillsborough County neighborhood called Six Mile Creek. It was a Klan neighborhood. I learned young that white supremacist males believed that they are superior. Women and people of color are to know their place. They fully embrace racism, misogyny, and hatred. They are Christian nationalists that know nothing of the teachings of Jesus. White supremacists have taken control of the federal government, and our democracy is being threatened. Racists always identify others to persecute. In this case, it is Hispanic immigrants, legal and illegal. They call all immigrants across the border criminals. It is a civil offense to cross the border illegally, not criminal. If they are caught, deported, then cross the border again, it becomes criminal. U.S. and international law allow people clean certain conditions to apply for asylum. All immigrants are being portrayed as vicious criminals, even though American citizens commit crimes two to three times at the rate that immigrants do. They are being rounded up by ICE and deported without due process, which is against our laws and the Constitution. They are also being arrested when they appear at court as directed, trying to follow the legal path to become citizens. This is un-American. ICE acts more like Gestapo than American law enforcement. What is being done is going to wreck our economy. Immigrants make up part of our workforce. They work in the industries Americans do not want to work in: agriculture, construction, hospitality, home health care, childcare, and more. The drop in the available workforce will impact America and Hillsborough County in negative ways. Immigration has always been the part of our foundation that makes America strong. This racism has led to the literal whitewashing of our history. The removal of the contributions of women and people of color from places of recognition is disgusting. They attack DEI. The Sermon on the Mount was all about diversity, equity, and inclusion. We are better than this. If we do not change course, racism and hatred will destroy America. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Cobert. Appreciate your comments. That closes public comment. Clear motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Miller. Please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. Bonnie, want to introduce the first item?
Thank you. The first item is Item B1. This is to authorize staff to conduct stakeholder and community engagement regarding the construction of a new equestrian facility. John Muller will present this item, and Forrest Turbott is here also with any questions.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. John Muller, Director of Facilities Management and Real Estate Services, and of course, with me today is Forrest for Conservation and Lands Management. Today, we are asking you to authorize us to conduct stakeholder engagement for a draft RFP, which we did provide in your agenda item backup. The intent of the draft RFP is to exchange our current Bacchus Equestrian Center, or BEC, facilities and property, for a new similar-scope facility located approximately two miles away at the county's Northwest Equestrian Park along Mobley Road. I'll note that this proposal is not here for the first time, as an RFP was conducted from 2017 to 2020. The limitations of the current BEC remain the same today. It's aging an equestrian facility with only about nine acres of land and with limited access to a residential neighborhood. That proposal sought to exchange the BEC for two similar facilities, one at the Northwest Equestrian Park and another in the Sydney Dover area. Our recommendation in the draft RFP focuses on just one facility at the northwest. So a new facility located at the county's northwestern Equestrian Park offers many long-term benefits. Space, there are six miles trails and I think about 300 acres of adjacent conservation land. Access off of Mosley Road, not off, not through a neighborhood. And I did hear in the public comment, safety mentioned. I'm going to note that at some point, a future fire rescue station number 50 is slated for the Mosley Road area, so there may be an opportunity there, as well as we'll do an assessment of the site for the environmental safety concerns. And then lastly, efficiencies and expanded programming. The site, a larger site allows for additional users, increased visibility. So if authorized today to proceed, we will review the RFP with stakeholders. The stakeholders, of course, include the Bacchus Horses for Handicap, who are in, who we currently have a use agreement in for the BEC, nearby community members, and also the equestrian community as a whole in the county. We do note that the RFP calls for the current programming to continue uninterrupted in facilities that are equal or better. The RFP includes most, if not all, the previous facilities language that was a result of collaboration with stakeholders and the nonprofit in 2017. We will also seek two new appraisals for our current facility, and after our engagement, we will present to the B O C C a final RFP. Thank you. Take any questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, John. Appreciate the comments. I don't see anything else in the queue. I'll just say a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the folks that came down this morning and the one individual that spoke virtually. They brought up some excellent points as far as ensuring the necessary security is there, you know, storm, stormwater issues. I also do appreciate the, the history lesson, for lack of a better point. I guess I was probably the only one here back on the initial RFP. And the primary concerns that I remember at the time is that it would, the majority of those that utilize the facility are in the northwest or not too far away from that general area. And that proposal had going all the way to Sefner, so there were significant concerns with, you know, getting there and just, and those type of challenges. And so rightfully so, the initial one was, was canceled. From what we've seen so far, when you look at it, it, to me, it makes a lot of sense for us at least to consider it. I like the fact that we're asking, you know, the board to approve going out and having the stakeholder meetings. But when you consider from a programming, sense, safety, and financial, I think it's incumbent on us to at least, nothing else, to take a look. As John says, allow us for greater access to trails, additional space, safer, more accessible. I don't know, many of you have been out there, but you do have to go through a neighborhood. It would be very, very challenging for, for fire rescue or for an ambulance to have to access there if, if necessary. We want to ensure that there's no program or service interruption, so it'd be a seamless delivery. Again, it's 2.3 miles away from the current location, so I see no reason why we shouldn't, you know, have the stakeholder meetings. Let's get additional input, and then we'll, you know, we'll go from there. And I didn't even touch on the financial challenges that, long-term, remaining there would be a burden on the county from a capital and, and operating perspective. But this facility is a, is a treasure. I'm very familiar with it. I remember years ago, I mean, probably 20 years ago, and there were, county had considered some changes, and we had folks coming in here during our public hearing, and it was a senior citizen who was disabled that played a ukulele and said how this was therapy, you know, for him, and there wasn't a dry eye in the room. So I know how important a facility this is for the community, and if there are any issues that, any concerns that we have, we won't go forward. But from what we see right now, I think it warrants taking an additional look. And so I'm happy to pass a gal, I'll make a motion to, you know, to have the stakeholder meetings, and we'll go from there.
Second.
Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thanks, John. All right, Bonnie.
Thank you. The next three items are Commissioner Bowles's items. The first one, Item F1, regarding a workshop for the Indigent Healthcare Program.
Yes, thank you. I think that, as, this was been on my radar for several years, even before I came onto the board, there's been some issues there that you see the funds that have been collecting over the past several years, pretty much starting with the pandemic. And one of the things I did with fire rescue was kind of hone in on some of the excesses that were in there and how they could maybe be better used for some of the services that were provided through our first for some of the services that were provided through our first, with our first responders. As we've seen, that those have continued to accumulate, and there are a number of issues that my colleague across the dais here has brought up over the years that I share some concerns with as well, that we cannot continue to not address the reserves that are accumulating at a factor that we don't have control over people spending, but we do have control over how the, the way that we collect the money for that. And I'd like to essentially have a workshop. And the last one was in May of last year. I know this has come up under discussion at different regular meetings, but I think that it may behoove us to really look at that because I can see that we need to have a reduction of some sort, as well as finding a way to burn off some of that reserve that has been accumulating that is now over half a billion dollars as of June, I believe. So we need to provide some opportunities to realistically look at how we can do this, if it's a step-down program over several years or looking at different things. So I would like to schedule a workshop. I do have two dates, which I will confirm with the clerk, that could be used of October 29th or January 14th to do so. And I'm kind of open to that. But so essentially, I'd like to have a workshop. And then, in the second portion of that, after the end, it says, any action as related to the program. I want to be specific about that because I can see where that may be misconstrued, that if we have open contracts or contracts or adjustments that need to be made to the current operations of the indigent healthcare program and what's going on with that, that this is only related to the ordinance, just the ordinance, any adjustments to the ordinance.
Okay. So the motion is to schedule a workshop either in, what was it, November or January, depending on?
October 29th or January 14th.
Yeah, whenever works best with board members' calendars. Second, Commissioner Wollstill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just also wanted to reiterate that all of my original intents were always to protect the original intent of this item, which is far beyond what we're doing now. I mean, this went so far, I mean, let's just have an honest conversation, that the former director of this program waited until the county administrator went on vacation and then slid an item onto the agenda, at which point she had to quickly remove it because it was not authorized. I mean, this is, this whole working poor thing, medically poor thing, which according to the Attorney General is illegal for us to even continue to consider, but which has clearly been on our minds as we program these dollars, is just moved far and beyond with the original, two intents: support the indigents, the truly indigents, not the medically poor, and to make sure that we're protecting the, what is it? The Level One Trauma Center in our region, which I don't think that actually, because the state law has a hard and fast number in there that doesn't scale with inflation, they probably don't get supported enough in that. And maybe that's something that we can look in the workshop. I just think that it's just gone too far. So thank you for bringing the item forward.
Okay. Don't see anyone else in the queue. We have a motion by Commissioner Bowles, Second Commissioner Wollstill. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
F2.
F2 is also Commissioner Bowles's item regarding relocating flag dollars.
Yes. Simply put, at the end of our flag session, when, several weeks ago, I committed the remainder of the amount to Public Works projects, I received kind of an executive summary of what I was putting that towards. And the numbers that came back came back a little lower than what was expected. So I wanted to at least use those for these two projects as far as Tampa Bay Arts and supporting their efforts and Matty's Movement, which is a nonprofit that helps transition children from foster care and young adults for foster care into home of life.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bowles, Second Commissioner Wollstill. Please accord your vote on F2.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
F3.
And Commissioner Bowles's third item is regarding evaluating the potentially of incorporating a privately funded ice skating rink at the Mosey Development Site.
Thank you. So as we moved forward earlier this year with the indoor sports facility at the Mosey site, and earlier I spoke about the, at the Mosey, about our economic development plans for that entire area, we came upon my thoughts that I'm an avid hockey fan and have been for years. My son played private and travel league for many years. And I thought that this would be a great opportunity, perhaps, to look to see if we can invest and build on the synergy that's happening in that area, where we have the football stadium that's being built by USF. We have the redevelopment of the golf course, as well as the other things that are happening there. And I just wanted to see if this is a viable option as well, that we can kind of prosper, go from that point.
Yeah, I'll, Commissioner Wollstill.
I was just going to say I wanted to hear from you because it's your item, so.
Thank you. I'm ecstatic about this item, and I thank Commissioner Bowles for bringing this forward. Couple of things I can tell you back in, I see the possibility of, a lot of possibilities. But one, with that location there, partnering with not only the Lightning, but also USF. I know currently USF uses a facility up in Wesley Chapel. I can tell you back in, I want to say 2008, I flew to Dallas with the Tampa Bay Lightning to look at, they have a model, a model there called Dr. Pepper's Star Center, where the hockey team is Dallas Stars. And they partner back there, it's with the cities. And they have, they have about four or five of these star centers, where Dr. Pepper's the lead sponsor. And these facilities are open from 5:00 a.m., probably till midnight every day. And they're just jam-packed with ice skaters in the morning using the ice, to hockey players. Events can be there, and it was a wonderful model. And at the time, we were looking at where the new Tampa Performing Arts Center is. And then the recession took, occurred. And again, that was going to be privately funded as well, and that just kind of got derailed. So I know there's a lot of potential with partnering with the Lightning, with USF and others. And with respect to Mosey, that location, we know there's going to be an entertainment wing that would include the indoor facility, the planetarium that's already in existence, and then a studio and black box theater. This would be an unbelievable addition. There's going to be at least one hotel, maybe two. Commissioner Bowles has experienced the joys and the financial challenges of travel sports with hockey. And I know hockey is much more expensive than softball than I experienced. But they're revenue generators. I mean, you're spending a lot of money at these events. And if we could pull this off, I think it'd be remarkable. So hats off, Commissioner Bowles. Best of luck, and, you know, let's go get them.
Second.
We got a motion, Commissioner Bowles, Second Commissioner Wollstill. Please accord your vote. Commissioner Bowles, you want to say anything else?
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. And the next item is Item F4. Commissioner Hagan is yours regarding an amendment to the ordinance relating to the Northdale Special Taxing District.
All right, thank you. Now, over the last several weeks, I've heard from members of the Northdale Special Taxing District. They're the local agency created by ordinance and whose board is elected by the residents to oversee common areas. They're asking that we clarify their enacting ordinance with respect to landscaping. The taxing district is looking to install synthetic turf over some of their segments of medians and rights-of-way on Northdale Boulevard. While their intent is to contribute to the community's aesthetics, they're also seeking to overcome challenges with landscaping, maintenance, and irrigation. I'm on Northdale Boulevard daily. Well, first of all, my aide lives in Northdale. I'm on Northdale Boulevard daily. That's where I, the gym is that I work out at. And most of the landscaping, I can tell you, is pristine. But you've got little pockets, areas where it's all dirt because of irrigation challenges, and they can't, they just can't make it work. And so they came to us, you know, looking to be able to amend the ordinance to do this. They want to be in full compliance. They sought approval from Public Works. When they met with Public Works, they asked the county attorney's office to review the ordinance. And within this, the ordinance, the section that states, "The district may review previously installed landscaping irrigation systems within the common areas of the district and maintain, remove, or correct as deemed appropriate, but it doesn't allow for a change to another form of landscaping, in this case, artificial or synthetic turf." I think it's important to point out that we use turf on our athletic fields. Earlier this year, Governor DeSantis signed a bill prevents local governments from prohibiting the use of synthetic turf on private property. So I think if we can use it on athletic fields, and we can use it as property owners, it only makes sense that this is an option for the taxing districts to consider. So the motion is that we direct the county attorney to draft an amendment to the existing ordinance giving the Northdale Special Taxing District full authority over all landscaping matters within common areas, including the use of synthetic turf. It's important to point out, it does not relieve the district from securing the necessary right-of-way permits if they choose to go down that path. So I think that's important to point out. So I'll pass the gavel and make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Wollstill. Seeing no one in the queue, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, board members. All right, Bonnie?
Okay. The next item are future discussion items. Commissioner Hagan, you're going for record here.
I know, I think we are. Commissioner Wollstill?
This will be very quick. I would like to direct the county administrator to work with my office on identifying the key stakeholders internally and externally required to do an overview of the Hillsborough County Transportation Design Manual. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else, future issues? If not, I think our fastest meeting ever is now adjourned.